Look like there's anybody else who's not. Oh, it looks like.
Now it says it's live.
Okay, now it's live. Abby says hi. We're trying to remember how we do two computers in one room.
You have to do your mute and then she unmutes.
She's confident I'm not, as you all know.
Oh, my goodness.
It is.
Are you going?
Yeah, I don't know how. It's on.
I think we're waiting on John and Jeff, right? There.
There we go.
Let me check on. I texted John, so let me just see if he's. Able to get in. There we are.
I sent John my link.
Yeah, I'll just rename them. There we go.
I could be Julian, I'm fine.
All right. I think we are all. Here, let me just be sure I have mine. All right, so I think we are all here. We're ready to have the attendance. Please.
All right, so the attendance, Mrs. Giftus.
Yeah.
Ms. Casalonis. Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Ms. Leong.
Here.
Mrs. Lindstrom.
Here.
Mr. Penny.
Here.
Mrs. Turner. Ms. Giftus.
Here.
And Ms. Bertulia.
All right, thank you, Diane. Agenda item 3.0 is the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you could join me in the pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Perfect. So Agenda Item 4.0 is our workshop. 4.1 is our school board goal setting that we are going to do today. Am I echoing?
Yes. Am I echoing?
Yeah, y'all are.
So maybe.
Can you still hear me?
Diane, you mean?
Yeah, so if anyone who is not speaking, maybe if the rest of us just mute, I wonder if that makes a difference or not. We could try it out anyway.
Well, you didn't echo just then.
Yeah, it's better.
Yeah, and you're not echoing. Am I echoing? All right, we good? Okay. Um, so 4.1 is our school board goal setting. As you know, we started working on this on our retreat and we got some work done, but we still had some outstanding work on our goals to do. So that is our goal for the next hour before our meeting. Everybody should have the proposed goal sheet that we were working off of. Does anybody need that before we get started? We all good? All right. Um. I can probably share my screen so we can talk, we can work off the same document. Share this. All right, so we have this, our first goal that we were working from was to promote and grow a district district-wide culture of trust, inclusion, and collaboration. So we have some items in here that we were looking to take out and some looking to adjust a little bit. Um. I think what, 1 through 3, we were, we were all good on. Is that, are we still good? We still are all feeling comfortable with Goals 1 through 3? The fourth goal is where we had ended. We had talked about removing it completely, and then I know there was some question on if we should do that. So I just wanted to open that up. Is this something that, the item 4 was, or Goal 4 was, improve the feedback loop with, prove the feedback loop with the staff, i.e. maintain contact on budget concerns with staff, Zoom listening sessions, each board committee should engage in discussion on this. Alicia, I know you had some comments to this. Do you want me to turn it over to you? Do you want to?
Sure. I, I, you know, this is something that I feel strongly about and feel like it took a back burner since we developed that goal and I'm not confident that we've really achieved that to the point where staff are comfortable reaching out in the manner in which we'd like them to. I did also this week send a law that requires us to communicate with staff. And I think that, that given, that actually made me even more convinced in, in my thought process because I did, it did take some time to think it over. That's something that I, I really think that we should keep.
I wonder if we clean it up. Let me do this first. What if we clean it up and take out? There we go. Improve the feedback loop with the staff. So that I think is good, and to your point about the new law and the way we communicate with staff, I think is incredibly important. But I wonder if we kind of clean up the maintain contact on budget concerns with staff, Zoom listening sessions, and each board member, each board committee should engage in discussion on this. Do we, do we think all of that is necessary? How are we? How do we feel about that?
Well, I'm not sure how we're monitoring this for, for success. I mean, that was some concrete examples to, in, in which we could do it. I don't, I don't think that we did all of that. I know in policy, we were pretty, I would say, I felt good about what we did in policy. I haven't been on financial for a while to know if that has been happening. I think that the concerns that I heard about the budget process were that although there's a process in which you know, individual teachers can sort of share and, and it can go up the food chain, they're not, they weren't necessarily convinced that that information, their individual perspectives were being relayed. So I mean, we could leave it like that and then, and then as a, you know, remove it as you suggest and then keep it as an item, but we're, but the question I have is how do we implement it, I guess?
Yeah.
I mean, is that maybe the goal that we try to figure out, like a sustainable practice for doing it?
Oh, boy, Kristen, can you?
I'm so sorry.
I'm so sorry to even ask. I'm so sorry. What did you say?
I think maybe that is the goal that we like, try to set up a sustainable method to keep that loop open because we did do it a little bit in finance. I think COVID caused us to lose a little bit. But maybe if we can find some consistent things that don't have to be revisited by each committee and every year that we do it.
Yeah. So maybe we just take out the specifics, the, right here, that's highlighted, the i.e. maintain contact. And we kind of improved the feedback loop with staff period. Each board committee could engage in this discussion on this and kind of leave it there. Does that feel? Does that feel good to everybody?
Do you want to do thumbs up while we're doing these discussions so we can get feedback, thumbs up, thumbs down?
Sure. Yeah, how do we feel if we take that out? Are we all? Leave it a little bit more broadbanded? Okay. So it would look like this. Does that look good? Thumbs up. All right. All right, number five, develop the clear procedure for feedback cycle for staff to engage throughout the budget process beyond the initial intake process. So this kind of I, I think we're in the same kind of what go together hand in hand, right? The, the communication with staff. I don't, this isn't something we, we, I don't recall that we did this last year. So is this something we want to continue trying to work on this year? Thumbs up or thumbs down or comments?
I have a question more for, I guess, Diane. I thought that we actually did have those Zoom sessions for finance with the staff, so it was being done?
We did. Yep, and in fact, like as it relates to this year, all of our building leaders have established some times for some of those listening sessions to occur at their schools too. So that is a piece that we've done, for sure.
Great. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Leanne and Diane. I did not know that. So is it, then I guess we don't need to develop a procedure. Is it maybe continuing on? Does that feel better?
Are these going to be back in person, Diane? Sorry, are these going to be in person?
Um. I would have to go back to the building principles to see. I think it probably depends at each site, right? Depending on the size of the school and so on and so forth, whether they're doing those as in person, or like, for example, I know because we have them on our budget calendar, and I was at the middle school the other day, meeting with Kathy, and she was getting ready to go, like what she's done, for example, is split into several smaller listening sessions so that she's hearing from, you know, different groups or different departments individually. So, you know, all of our principals are really looking to make sure that they're, you know, getting an opportunity to hear from staff about the things that are priorities for them as we are just beginning to plan the requested budget process for next year.
But these aren't specifically for the board then, because like, two years ago, we did the listening sessions in person for the board in the school with Kate, and those were great. But isn't, isn't that, I can't read the goal right now, but work is about the board getting, like board listening sessions?
So, you know, and again, Jeff, you can certainly jump in if you want to talk about our process for this year. But as we approached this year, one of the things, and I think last year's process was pretty similar, that these happened at the school level with principals, and the reason why that approach was decided on is because the principals are responsible for putting together their budget and planning that together with their staff. And so it made sense for that conversation to happen with those individuals who have a big responsibility to put together a budget request and bring to central office. So that was our thinking around that.
Right, and plus it's, you're embedding the, the feedback loops so that you're getting input and information from all staff in the building as opposed to maybe one or two people who show up at a listening session. It's just, we want to make sure that there's an embedded process where staff input is, and the collective staff input is being brought to the building leader, and then that's the initial part that will then fuel our discussions as a, as a leadership team. And informing the board all the way along the process.
I think that the the feedback that I heard was, I'm, I, what you're saying, I think, is necessary, absolutely, but I, some of the feedback that I heard, and I know that was considered in the development of this goal initially, was that at times, staff members have differences of opinion than administration about good use of funding. And I would say instructional coaches has, is a good example of that. I think that, that's something that I have heard consistently over the years that teachers when, when administration is looking at cut, making cuts, that they would prefer that they look at those roles first. And administration may have a, a, a good rationale for it, and staff may have a good rationale for their opinion. But it, I think that the concern that I heard was sometimes that information gets lost in the process when it's reported directly to administration, and they wanted an opportunity for it to be heard by the board. That, that was my recollection of things that, that prompted that that goal.
So do we feel that we need to beef this up, or do we think that continuing the cycle covers both what Jeff and admin is doing and then what our goal is as well?
That's what I, I think personally, and, and I'm open to everybody else's suggestions, but I mean, you know, it, it may be one of those things where people complain and then they don't take advantage of the opportunity to come and discuss it, it, you know, for whatever reason that they may have, good, bad, or indifferent to, to the board as a group, but at least we've heard that feedback from staff, and we've tried to address it in the best way that we know how. And if it's not successful after good faith attempts, we can, we can reassess it.
Does that feel, feel good? So we'll thumbs up that we'll continue the cycle that's in place, or thumbs down if we don't don't want it. We good? All right. So that one is good. Number six, this one was, initially it was review the finance policy to ensure alignment with current practices. And this is on hold because of the town charter, town council charter review. So there is an amendment suggested to say that upon completion of the town council charter review, review finance policies to ensure the alignment with current practices. So this is a little bit out of our hands until. So are we okay with that update? Is there any discussion we need or just are we okay here? Okay, number seven, I'm going to suggest we hold off on, which is the DEI Subcommittee. This has to be reworked, of course, because we've already created that committee, but I want to save it because I think we can nestle it in under number three. So if we're okay with that, I'm going to go on to goal two, but we'll definitely come back here. Is that okay? All right. Um, well, let me back up. Before I come out of goal one, is there anything that we are missing that anybody feels that we're missing underneath here? That's a pretty hefty one. All right. Our second goal was to establish a plan to address current facility needs for our future service capabilities. So our first, the first subset under here was, initially was adequately fund our next steps through the budget process. And there's been a proposal to change this, and it's determine the next steps and address funding needs that arise. Kristen, do you, I hate to even ask, do you want to speak to this? Oh, she's going to chat. Perfect. She says we funded the first step in the FY 2022 budget, and I'd like to keep it open for future funding needs. That, I mean, that to me feels appropriate. Is there anybody that has any comments or concerns with that, leaving that goal open? Are we thumbs up on this one? All right, I think we're done. All right, the second goal, the second sub-goal is establish a plan to collaborate with town call to advance the project. And this, I know, is, is an ongoing. I would, I think this is incredibly important to be sure that we're collaborating with town council and that we're in this together and that we have, to me, this is me personally, I think that we both need to be at the table, right? So I would like to see this goal continue. Is there anybody that has a thumbs down or has a comment?
I didn't wordsmith this in advance, but I do wonder about sort of our imminent long-term needs and our more long-term, long-term needs when we're talking about the project. You know, I, I am assuming we're talking about the consolidated primary schools, but, you know, we've also had the middle school discussion and whether we can meet the, all of the needs at once. So we've got a few.
Alessia, we're calling it the new elementary school. We're not going to use consolidated.
Okay. That's a good idea.
The new elementary school.
Thank you.
That will also address the middle school as well. And just, I, I hate to interrupt here, but I have reached out and with Lisa Harriman, and we've got two dates at the end of this month, actually, what is it, Wednesday, I want to say, January 26th, or Tuesday, February 1st, try and put together like a big kickoff meeting of the Building Steering Committee. So I'm planning on sending an email out to everyone who was associated with the old steering committee as well as a couple others to try, like another town councillor as well as a town department head, Todd Souza as well, just to get more of a town involvement, at least in the initial meetings here. So that's in the works.
Awesome. So do we want to just identify this as sort of this imminent, long-term need? The new school.
You mean up on the title?
Yeah, or, yeah, I guess. I mean, because we have a lot of long-term needs, but.
So do we, I, I, let me just make sure I'm hearing you, like to maybe say something like establish or continue a plan to address the new, or to build a new elementary school. I'm totally throwing just words out there. Is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, just to identify what project we're referring to.
So. Kristen, do you do you have a thought on a title for that? Because to Alicia's point, I see what she's saying. I'm assuming she's typing, so I'm going to let her type. I'm going to ask about number two again. Is we, do we need to establish a plan to collaborate with town council to advance the project because that's already? No, I'm sorry, do we need to? I've, I've lost my place. Number two is the collaboration numbers, which is where we were, right? Yes. Um. I think we're all good there. We said we're all good, and then we're moving on to number three, which was work with town council to inform the development of a strategic growth plan. Do we, what do we feel about that one?
I'm not sure that strategic growth plan is the right terminology.
Yeah. I would agree.
Shannon, is that, is that kind of trying to align what we need to do as a school, district, and school department with the growth needs of the other parts of the town, i.e. library and other potential growth areas? Or, or facilities needs?
Yes. So, would that be like a continue to align? School needs? I'm just going to type this out and then we can wordsmith it. Continue to align, unless, feel free to jump in, anybody. Continue to align school needs with town, but, say that again, Jeff, town.
I don't know, what did I say?
Continue to collaborate with town council to align school needs with town.
With other, you know, facility needs of other departments-ish?
School needs with town with facility. all right, so continue to collaborate with town council to align school growth needs with other town facility expansion or development projects? Let me, let me go over to Kristen really quick. Kristen says, I think the goal should be moved elsewhere. It's more about keeping the town informed of how their decisions impact the school and keeping those lines open. I'm not sure it's tied to the goal of what heading is something to do with the new school.
I can't see that message for some reason.
I guess I'm just thinking if we changed goal two to be about a new elementary school, that goal still feels like, separate from that, you know? I'm not sure it's the same thing anymore.
Shannon, can you reread her chat message?
Yeah. I think the goal should be moved elsewhere. It's more about keeping the town informed of how their decisions impact the schools and keeping those lines open. Open. I'm not sure it's tied to the goal if we change the heading to something to do with a new elementary school. So you're saying that the goal as a whole, Kristen, was, was all projects in keeping the line of communication open regarding anything the schools needed? Not just a new, new elementary school? Because if that's the case, it's almost like what Alicia just typed out, this could be the goal. What do you guys think about that?
I'd be more comfortable with that than calling it out to be the elementary school. Um, only because then it misses what's happening with the middle school. Um, we know that that's over capacity. Um, and I don't want to eliminate looking at realignment of grades if necessary to support where our students are sitting.
Well, and how it's, how you framed it too, is it also acknowledges that if you, if, if, if we need, you know, town departments and town leadership as part of this, this school, school project, that it's going to have to be aligned with the other departments and where the town is headed to. So I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
And obviously our focus is on, on the schools, but.
I kind of like this as a goal because I think that the, like I said earlier, the collaboration with town, um, the town council and town employees outside of school employees is incredibly important, right? That we're all on the same page. We're all working together as a cohesive unit versus, um, separately. So I, I think that that feels good, that the goal is written that way.
Yeah, and from a strategic standpoint too, in terms of getting community support. Um, as Leanne noted, you know, there is a two birds with one stone aspect to this because there's also facilities, growth needs at the middle school. So if, if, you know, our project is, is addressing both the needs at the elementary level and the middle school level, then, then it's more compelling to.
Yeah. So does everybody, do we have, um, we can go to thumbs up, thumbs down for this goal? How do we feel about the, the verbiage here? Okay, okay. So, um, we would keep the funding, um, needs, the budgetary needs, because that's, we said we wanted that out left in there. Um, this, do, do we need this any longer? I don't think so, right? Because it's right here, because we're collaborating as a goal.
Personally, I'd leave it in, um, and I might be the only one out there and I can be easily swayed back. We can continue to talk to them, but I really think we need an action plan to get this brought forward and discussed. Because otherwise it's just conversations and, you know, not throwing shade on any other projects. Because all projects that are in the town are important. But the library is continuing to push forward and I think we need to have that conversation really openly about town priorities. And I don't know if you watched the workshop the other night, but they brought up the, um, community center again. And I hate to see us keep falling back further and further in line.
So do you think, um, I, I totally hear what you're saying, Leanne, and I, I can get on board with that for sure. But do we need to be a little bit more specific about what this is, the project? Or should we just say projects, advanced projects?
I go to Jeff's term of the new school.
Okay.
And then just leave it open as to what that school is.
The new school.
Right, and, and the, and the fact that, um, when we get there and we're not there yet, but as, as we're describing what the project is, how, um, building a new school will not only address, um, issues around facilities and, and growth and enrollment at the younger grades, but also deal with the fact that, you know, we've had sixth graders in a, in a portable for 20 years.
So thumbs up or thumbs down on number two as it stands? Okay, I think we're good there. Um, number three, work with town council to inform the development of a strategic growth plan. Oh. That's the one, do we?
That's the part that we deleted in favor of the.
Yeah, that's the one we deleted. So I'm going to go ahead and delete that. Um, so then the third one is solicit members. Okay, this is the one we need to remove, right? Kristen, let me just be sure I'm at the right, yeah. Um, Kristen said to propose to remove this goal, um, we're not in a position yet to establish that subcommittee. Um, the regular communication with, um, within the community is what's really where our focus needs to be. Um, so how do we feel about removing this? Thumbs, thumbs, oh, Kristen says, hang on a second. She's typing. Okay, so this one is gone. Let's see, Kristen says, I, I might change it to utilizing our own communications team to update the community on our current status.
If that's part of a communication goal, should that be nested under number one?
I was just wondering the same thing. Do we want to move this up under the, this? The culture of trust, inclusion and collaboration? Or if we're specifically speaking to this, do we leave it? Um, Kristen says, or continued efforts to bring the community along.
I, 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 I feel mixed on this, um, because I don't, um, I haven't been working on this project for, for some time. But, um, I don't want to lose an opportunity, um, to, that, you know, we have people in our community who might be invested in this project and might be interested in using their, um, talents or their, their forums to, to really get the word out and to try to advocate for it. And we haven't, I don't, other than the, the technical expertise, I don't think we've called upon our community for that. And so I'm wondering if that's a last opportunity, if we don't think about that.
Okay, Kristen says, what about work with, should I say vendor or should I name them? Vendor to establish a communications plan? How does that feel? I think that, I thought she was suggesting, um, uh, Alicia was that we weren't yet in a place to establish that committee. But because the work hasn't been, I, I think the work needs to be done first to establish the plan and then you, and then you can solicit the community's help, but they're not quite there yet, is the way I'm interpreting it. So it's a goal they can't reach. In other words, if we make that a goal, they're not going to be able to reach it because there's not a communications plan.
Yeah, no, I like this.
How's that feel? Number three, as is, there's any other suggestions? Are we ready for thumbs up, thumbs down? All right. All right, and then goal three was our, um, the new goal we started to discuss, which was, um, really focusing on student achievement, um, and overall well-being, following, of course, um, the last year and a half of COVID. Um, so I worked through some of this, um, I talked with Jeff some, um, I just, this is a total, uh, just a start to a goal, um. The first being, um, that we establish and update the district-wide benchmarks for achievement in math and reading. So this would be when we talked at our retreat about setting those benchmarks and seeing, um, increased achievement in math and reading across the grades. Um, uh, that would be with this, I did, this identify. So what would happen from here is, um, the, you know, all with all of our goals, right? Jeff, Diane and the rest of, um, the staff would, would then work to meet, would set the, set strategic SMART goals and then, um, we would go forward. So really that establishing and updating the district-wide benchmarks for achievement in math and reading would be number one. How do we feel about that? Is that a thumbs up, Alicia? What's? All right, so are we ready? Any comments or we want a thumbs up, thumbs down?
Um, Shannon, I know you mentioned establishing some parameters around this for SMART goals. Would that be part of what this is so that we know what we're measuring on? Is it set, you know, second half of this year against first half of the year? Is it against last year? Is it two years ago? What are we measuring and how?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, th- those are all super important, uh, questions, Leanne. And, and I love that it's the first part of this goal because I think frankly, we all need reminders that we're in education and we're not public health officials first, right? We're educators first, so, um, and, and now that we're, we're able to resume, I think, more consistent forms of assessment. You know, particularly now resuming like NWEAs will have fall and spring data. We, you know, we've, we, we, there's a bit of a gap there during the remote year last year where we don't have that data. So, um, now that we're able to resume that, um, you know, we've already started talking a lot about this at the, um, at, at the school leadership and district leadership level. How do we do those things? So what are we measuring? How are we measuring it? What metrics can we use that's, so that the board can look at it from a district-wide and a school-specific lens? And set those measurable goals and targets? And then also not only be able to benchmark against our own internal growth, be, but to be able to benchmark off of other communities as well, um, which is also important. So, um, that's a long-winded way of, of, of saying that by setting that goal, you know, and, you know, over the course of, you know, the, the next very near future, we're able to flesh out, okay, this is how we're going to measure how kids are doing in Scarborough and math and how they're doing in reading at the different levels. Uh, and be able to set some pretty clear benchmarks for that. And I, I think it would be a combination of measuring growth over the course of the year because we're, we're now, um, assessing in the fall and in the spring and be able to do like year-to-year comparisons. And then also be able to, to benchmark against other communities as well. Now that we've been able to, we can resume, or we have resumed, um, the statewide testing.
Okay, thank you.
So how do we feel? Any other comments or questions about number one? Are we ready to thumbs up, thumbs down? Yeah, all right, how do we feel about number one? Thumbs up, thumbs down? All right. And when we, um, Leanne, more towards your point two, when we look at these goals midway through, we can probably have, um, it, by that point, right? Jeff and Diane would have had time to work through those, those numbers and have solid, solid numbers for us. Um, okay, so then the second one in relation, because once we start establishing these benchmarks, we assume, um, and we know, right, from COVID and the lost learning, that we're going to have students that aren't quite, um, at the level of their, their grade level. So they'll need some student support. So the second goal there would be to continue and strengthen the, because it's already happening, right? But strengthen that district-wide student support opportunities. Any questions or concerns here?
I, you know, I shared Leanne's concern that again, these are so vague that it's hard to, hard to monitor.
Um. Do you have a thought to strengthen it up?
Wouldn't that be ideal?
For me, Shannon, I think what would make this feel successful and like we have a goal to measure against to Alicia's point? What is our definition of success? What is the definition of done? Um, can we put some qual- qualifications around when the, when we're going to benchmark this? Are we going to see this quarterly? Is this something that will come to the board twice a year? Just something quantitative around it would help me feel way more comfortable that it's attainable and measurable.
Sure, so like, are we back to the number one, you mean, or number two?
I think it's.
All the above.
Or all the above, yeah.
Really does, not just one.
Yeah, all, I mean, all four of these areas. Um, the idea is that, okay, so we've got a goal that's related to overall academic achievement in, uh, math and reading, which, uh, you pick math and reading because there you're, you're able to do that internal and external kind of comparison across multiple grade levels, right? Um, it's not like an area like in technology and science, not to, not to diminish, you know, the importance of those areas, but they're not tested every year, you know? So it's, it's a little more challenging to, to measure in that way. Um, and then we've got the three areas that we're already really focused on as part of our strategic planning, which is focusing on, um, social emotional learning, which again can be difficult to quantify and measure, um, as well as the, the district-wide DEI work, um, and our student support structures. So, um, you know, we've, like I said, there's a, there's, there's a lot to flesh out in each of those four areas. And, and, but what this, what I love is, is to get feedback from the board and, and have these board, these goals set very broadly. And then within each of those broad goals, have a very specific or more specific way, um, that we're measuring and monitoring how we're doing in those four general areas. Um, because that, that's, that's where we would need to go next. To your points, all of your points in terms of articulating, um, and, and articulating how we're doing in these areas. But to me, these areas that make the most sense to try and flesh out.
If we had the report back regularly, we could then define this as a, um, as a superintendent goal.
Oh, absolutely.
And then have him report back to us on, on attaining those goals.
I, and, and, yeah, and, and Alicia, I'm glad you brought that up. I mean, I've been working on my goals and, and this is where they lie. Right here. In these areas.
Because I don't know that I, that I view it, you know? I, 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 I guess I think that. I I guess I think that unless if I can think of a way that we can ourselves make some sort of change and it's within our purview, then, you know, obviously I'm happy to do that. But other than that, I think it's probably just setting the goals for Jeff and ensuring that they're they're being that and then and then hearing, hearing how he's attaining them.
I'm trying to think of a way that we reword this top sentence so that it kind of reflects all of that. Is it set superintendent's goals to increase student overall achievement and well being?
Yeah, I don't know if if increase is even the right word you want to use, right? Yeah, strengthen might be better.
And, you know, just to go back on the inclusion of putting this with Jeff's goals. His goals are based on our goals. So we're creating that, you know, the five year plan, not quite, but you know what I mean? He has a three year and then he's given the buildings, the one year make it happen type of goals. So they should all fit together. And I wouldn't want to put his name on any specific one because all three belong to him. Yeah, this is our, this is our charge.
All right. So the goal is Alicia reworded it continue to strengthen student success, achievement and well being and math reading district wide student support opportunities, so social, social emotional learning and district wide DEI work. Through ongoing development. Okay, continue to strengthen student success, achievement and well being through ongoing development and monitoring. Wait, through ongoing development and math reading district wide student support. I think underneath we could probably nestle the monitoring, right? Like how often we want it to, yeah, pull that out. Jenna suggested worded as continue to collect data to establish benchmarks for achieving achievement in math and reading. So that could be
I I don't know if if achievement in math and reading is actually the goal. That would be an indicator of of improved academic performance. But we're not, we're not educating kids just in math and reading.
Right.
But I think it's an important indicator to use because you can benchmark progress and again, do that internally and externally, but that that's not necessarily the primary goal.
So is it maybe continue to strengthen student success and well being?
Or in in all subject areas?
Yeah.
And then the monitoring can be math and reading, it can be one of the monitoring.
Right. It couldn't be one of the indicators on on how you're doing.
Okay, so.
On how we're doing.
Okay, so continue to strengthen student success, take out achievement, Alicia. Since you're you're on it.
I I know that that's like the school thing to do, but I don't like taking achievement out.
You don't like what?
I don't like taking the word achievement out. Whatever your goal is, like I like to have kids set goals and achieve goals, even though I'm I'm like not a an educational background person, but I I like.
Make a strength in student success and achievement and well being. Kristen likes achievement too. Okay, let me just say it. Continue to strengthen student success, achievement and well being through ongoing development. And Jenna, you said all subjects?
Yeah, and and all subject areas. That way it kind of just captures everything all at once, not just.
Just math and reading.
Right.
Okay, continue to strengthen student success, achievement and well being through ongoing development in all subject areas, district wide student support opportunities, social, social, social emotional learning and through district wide DEI work. That's a big sentence. Jillian, I think you might be talking, but you're on mute. Oh, you were, sorry.
I'm trying to, so, but still. What are the benchmarks for each of these and and? I mean, how do we know if we're succeeding?
Well, I think that that's to Jenna's and then or Jeff's earlier, I think we're the the benchmarks have to be set. They're not, we don't have them yet because this is a brand new goal. So I think that that would be like well, Alicia's got it. Like number one would be the wording Jenna used, I'll read it to you, Alicia. Continue to collect data to establish benchmarks for achieving achievement in math and reading.
Yeah, a lot of that, what you're talking about Jenna would get fleshed out as as part of a a document that I would put together for for the board to review with respect to my goals. Really, at least that's how I'm how I'm interpreting it, how we're setting this up.
Yeah, I I think it's just because it's hard to determine the benchmarks when we don't, when we don't really know what we're looking at just yet. So if we can gather more information on your end and then be able to to set those benchmarks for at a later time.
Right, exactly.
All right. Let me type that. Let me put the the monitoring, the reporting down. Did report?
I think the term that Kristen used, we don't have baseline. So maybe continue to collect data to
Oh, establish.
Establish baseline in order to determine benchmarks.
How's that?
The the only thing about that is that, um, I I don't know that maybe I'm confused, but but what I thought was we were going to have a goal for for some form of achievement for students and one of the ways it would be monitored would be because math and reading is is uh, something that's easy, more easily monitored than other areas that we can use that as a benchmark. But but I I just worry about like achievement for it's going to look different for each student, I would imagine.
Right, but some of the, some of the bench, like we don't have data from last year. So some of those benchmarks have to be or baselines have to be established, right? We don't have all of the, we didn't do all of the testing last year. So it's where are we going to look from? Are we going to look from the year before? Are we just going to start it this year? That's, that's where I think we have to get that baseline established.
Right. And the challenge is the year to year state testing that we have for pre pandemic is a different test. So it's going to be apples to oranges a little bit if you're going back in history in terms of how we're doing now versus how we did then.
So we establish that baseline and then we can determine the benchmarks going forward.
All right.
All right. Well, how are we? How do we feel on number one at least? This one, the baseline, thumbs up, thumbs down?
And we're at six fifty, we're at six fifty eight, by the way.
Yeah, so, um, these, I think, because we've just folded them in, I'm going to take out, but I know we need to go back to DEI. And I know we need to finish these two. So we can maybe take this conversation offline, do you think, to finish this out?
No, we can't do that offline.
You're right, you we cannot. We'll have to set another, we'll do one more workshop. And we'll, we'll flush this one out and then, and then we'll have our goals. Sound good?
Would it help Shannon if, you know, for the next meeting too, I can, I can flesh a lot of what this goal would look like out. You know, in terms of how we would measure it. Et cetera, et cetera. You know, between now and our next meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, in our next meeting, we have a workshop with Melissa Huey to go over the do's and don'ts of executive session, the legal ramifications with that. So it might have to be our February, we may have to push to our February meeting.
Are we close enough that we, do we vote on these goals? I don't remember. Are we close enough that we could just? You know, have him make the changes and we could vote on them. And if there's any changes, we do it real time. I think we're so close.
Yeah, I think.
That we need a whole nother workshop to do it.
We probably are, I could, I think that that's that seems doable to me. You're you're on mute, Leanne.
Yeah, I suppose that would help, wouldn't it? What if we had like just a 30 minute workshop in front of a meeting to get that done? I it's so awkward, Alicia, to try to do it real time in the meeting while you're voting, because then we get, we don't get to wordsmith it and have a chance to absorb it before we're voting. But I think 30 minutes might get us covered and then we could vote in the business side of that meeting.
Yep. All right, um, 5.0 is adjournment. So we're going to do we need to make a motion and vote if we're going to just go right into our nothing, so we just go right into our meeting, right? All right. All right. So, um, good evening. Welcome to the regular business meeting of the Scarborough School Board of Education. The date is Thursday, January 6, 2022. May I have the attendance, please? Sure. Mrs. Giptis?
Here.
Ms. Casalona?
Yes, here.
Mr. Kellher?
Here.
Ms. Leon?
Here.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Here.
Mr. Peany Huff?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
And Ms. Giptis?
Here.
Perfect. Can everybody join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, 4.0 is adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments?
Uh, no adjustments.
All right. Um, agenda item 5.0 is public comment on agenda items. And I know it's been a few minutes since we've been fully remote. So I just want to remind anybody who is interested in making public comment. If you are, at the bottom of your Zoom screen, there is a raise hand option. If you could click on that, a little yellow hand will appear next to your name and I'll know that you're interested in making making public comment. Great. I'm going to go in order as I receive them. So the first one is Joanna Wallace. I'm going to promote you to a panelist so that she can speak with us and then we'll, we'll move on down the list. Just as a reminder, when we make public comments, please address your comments to me as the chair. Please state your full legal name and your address before you begin speaking for the record and please limit yourself to three minutes. All right, Joanna, you should be ready to speak. You're just on mute. You would want to unmute yourself.
All right. Thank you very much. My name is Joanna K. Wallace. My address is 29 Burnham Woods Circle here in Scarborough. I am a certified industrial hygienist and a certified safety professional. And like many others at this meeting, I deal with COVID protocols daily at work on top of my regular job. My children are in kindergarten and in third grade in Scarborough Public Schools. As a parent, I'm unclear what, if any, changes have happened or being proposed perhaps today as a result of the recent updates to the CDC and Maine's State of Maine SOP for schools for quarantine and isolation. The latest email I as a parent received was on January 2, stating that the changes will be made to the standard operating protocol for schools later this week. It's a little difficult for me to make a public comment when I don't know what the quarantine and isolation time frames, timeframes Scarborough Public Schools are following or considering, but I'm going to do my best to get my feedback heard. If Scarborough Public Schools are now or are considering allowing those who test positive for COVID to return after day five, I want to urge the school board to make sure that there is a good and solid plan in place for how that positive person will remain masked at school on days six through 10, particularly at lunch, snack time and on the playground. I understand and agree that it's, it is really important for children to remain in school. But an important way to do this is to make sure that the school is not the source of COVID spread. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Joanna. Um, our next one is Jennifer Jubelis. I'm going to go ahead and promote you. All right. And you are, you are free to speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm Jennifer Jubelis. I live at 16 Haystack Circle and I'm the parent of a fifth grader at Wentworth. I'm also, I'm sure you've heard from me, I'm a pediatric infectious disease physician and I have to say I've had the most challenging week of my career. As noted in the press, COVID cases in children and furthermore child hospitalizations have been skyrocketing and that's true nationally and locally. And when I hear these new CDC isolation quarantine guidelines, I'm worried. CDC isolation guidelines release infected individuals, including students from isolation after five days, but, and this is a huge but, they should be asymptomatic and they have to wear a mask 100% of the time around others. They should strictly avoid immunocompromised individuals and settings where they can't wear masks such as restaurants and gyms. And if they do have recurrence of their symptoms, the five day period starts all over. For individuals who are close contacts to someone with COVID-19, those fully vaccinated again must wear a mask at all times. And they should test at five days and those not fully vaccinated have to quarantine for five days, test at five days and then mask assiduously at all times for a second five days. Everyone should be asymptomatic. They must avoid higher risk individuals and higher risk settings where masking masks cannot be worn. And I'm really urging our community and our schools to fully understand these guidelines prior to their adoption and what this means for all of our students. Every single person in our community has to be scrupulously honest about what day their symptoms start, when and if they are tested and how symptomatic they are at day five and beyond. It's estimated that about a third of infected individuals remain contagious at days five to six. And with a virus where one individual can infect up to six others in an unmasked cafeteria And with a virus where one individual can infect up to six others in an unmasked cafeteria or recess, this is incredibly concerning. At the very least, if a child comes to school even mildly symptomatic and contagious on day five, we run the risk of incredible staffing shortages resulting in school closure. At the worst, we run the risk of multiple of student, of student being coming sick and becoming hospitalized. For this plan to be successful, multiple stopgaps must be put into place, including rigorous symptom checks and strict isolation at any time a student is unmasked. As a physician, I'm really struggling with what to say to my immun compromised patients who also desperately need to be in-person school. For the past year, we've worked incredibly hard to keep them in school safely and many of these immun compromised at-risk kids now feel left behind. Vaccines are available, but not all of our children have responded adequately, adequately to the vaccine and not all of our children have been able to choose to receive the vaccine. A friend of mine is an ethics professor and he has told me that when judging the rightness of a situation, the two questions we have to ask are first, how are the most vulnerable among us faring? And second, are you willing to trade places with those vulnerable persons? If you hesitate, then not all is rightly ordered. When I look at this situation, I hesitate and I hope many of us do. I'm not saying to close the schools. No one wants that. Schools are essential. We need to focus on keeping them open, but we need to open them safely. We all need to understand that for these guidelines to protect our most vulnerable, all of us need to work together. We are only as strong as our weakest link. Ideally, the schools would have an isolation plan in the cafeteria and at recess when masks aren't worn or exposed or infected students and staff. Ideally, rapid testing at day five would be provided and if positive at, at day five, the individual is recommended to return to isolation for five days. I encourage you to think creatively, explore community partnerships, and please, please understand these risks and develop a plan to ameliorate them. My patience and our students and staff depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. All right, I'm going to promote Denise next and Matt, you will be on deck. Okay, Denise.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Denise Blaine, I'm a teacher at Scarborough High School. I live in Buxton. I won't take a lot of your time tonight. Um, but I, I did just want to take a minute and um express my concern about communication. Um, as you are about to vote on an implementation plan. Um, I just sat in your goal setting meeting where one of your goals was to communicate clearly with staff about budgets and what have you. As I sit here tonight, home with symptoms, um, I this is the first time I've heard about a plan that's being voted on um, for our schools. Um, which is extremely, extremely disheartening to me. Um, I do not want our schools to close. But the staff has had no input about this plan um, at all, or a chance to even look at a plan. So this is the first time we're hearing about it. I want the schools to stay open, but I also think that you need to take into consideration what is happening in the buildings and sharing that information with parents and staff. Uh, as of today, we have not received one notification about COVID increase in our buildings. We're all speculating by attendance. There is a lot of fear happening right now. And I would just ask you tonight, when you vote on this plan that none of us have seen, um, that you really take into consideration one of your goals that you're setting for yourself is effective communication. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Matt Pine, you're gonna be next. We are able to go ahead and get started.
Hi, Shannon.
Hi.
Hi, thank you. My name is Matt Pine. I live at two Woodgate Road in Scarborough. Um, I would just ask that the board in its decision tonight put in the interest in-person learning of our children at the very forefront. Um, last year we saw pretty difficult situations with parents and students with school shutdowns and hybrid learning. And that's been devastating to our, our country, our children. Um, whatever decision you make tonight, I would ask that what you do is advocate for maximum in-person learning and try to drown out some of the fear that's, that's being peddled. What we see scientifically is that students have really lost opportunities because of lack of in-person learning. So whatever decisions, please maximize in-person learning for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let me see. Um, I don't see any other yellow hands. Is there anybody else? Interested in making public comment at this time? All right, seeing no others, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment for the evening. All right, agenda item six point O is the summer programming update. So for this, we'll hear from Monique Culbertson, the Director of Curriculum and Assessment. So let me get her. All right. All right, Monique, you're on.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased today to provide a presentation that I typically do in the fall. And typically the presentation involves maybe one or two summer programs. And tonight I'm going to be talking about six different programs. Um, as a result of our challenging times. So I'd like to begin with our first slide. The why. Um, it's pretty obvious we had an unusual year last year. And we focused on many things that we typically don't always have to focus on um, in terms of staying healthy, making connections, sense of belonging, interaction because of the different types of learning models we had last year. And we typically have, um, when our students are in person with us, we are able to fill the differences between some of the more well-resourced homes we have in the community and some of the less well-resourced homes we have. So we started to think about summer programming in the spring about what can we do for our struggling learners. We also were benefited greatly from a federal funding. And there was a twenty percent set aside to support this unfinished learning. So let me describe what was offered. We had six different programs going last summer. The first three on this list on this slide with way too much information. Uh, the first three are programs that we've offered in the past. The first is kinder camp, which is an opportunity for our entering kindergarteners to experience this thing we called school. We, every year is a required program, an extended school year summer program for students with specialized needs. We have typically in the past run a summer reading academy. We shifted that and referred to it as a summer academy, an elementary summer academy where we focused on basically just some get to know you, teaching students how to get to know each other. We certainly um, uh, went by all of the safety recommendations for our students that were in place um, last summer, but we leveraged the Wentworth Intermediate School space and we offered that summer academy for our students entering grades one through five. New this summer was a middle school summer academy. We were experiencing students who may be expressing some school avoidance issues, or we had new students to the district who were going to be starting school. We had students um, transitioning from middle school, from, excuse me, Wentworth to the middle school. So we invited those students to participate in a summer academy and we ran two sessions, two, two-week sessions. All of our summer programs run Monday through Thursday, a four-day week. Middle school band, because of the situation last year, our students in fifth grade were unable to access band. Um, and so our um middle school band instructor stepped up and wanted to present an idea to provide individual instruction to students in their instruments that they may be interested in. Some of these experiences took place outside, right, in the parking lot or on the school property. Um, and then finally, the summer school academy, the summer high school academy. Um, we have thought about and wanted to offer some sort of credit recovery summer programming at our high school for years, but it was cost prohibitive. So we leveraged these federal funds in order to start to offer and explore what it might be like and what the costs involved might be, a summer academy. In terms of participation, um, we were really worried last spring. We weren't going to have a lot of staff step up. Everyone was so exhausted. Uh, but we had sufficient staff to support these numbers of students. And so if we total the number of students who participated in these programs, we're close to four hundred students were serviced last summer. Um, with about a hundred staff, which is really remarkable given the exhaustion folks were feeling last uh, year as a result of what we endeavored. What did it cost? Locally, some funds were spent in support of these summer programs, but we also had several rounds of federal funding come to us. We had the CARES S R one and the A R P S R three. It's the S R three funding that had the twenty percent set aside, so we really tried to leverage as much funding as possible from S R three towards each of these academies. Please note that within these costs, um, we include salaries and benefits for our staff, some supplies, but also contracted services. We leverage contracted services certainly in the specialists to work with our students during the extended years, uh, extended school year program, but also in the high school academy, we leveraged an online learning platform called Ingenuity to assist students with their coursework. Costs not included in this programming are transportation, facilities, food service, and administration, the oversight of these programs and the development of the communications and the distribution. In terms of impact, kinder camp is a really an opportunity for both the students to get to know what this thing called school looks like, but also um, to allow the staff to get to know the students in order to make better transition plans for each individual student. Extended school year, students are tracked, their progress is tracked individually. In the elementary academy, we surveyed students just about weekly. Um, and elementary students are pretty clear when they like something or don't like something and are pretty honest about letting us know pretty darn quickly. Uh, and we also surveyed parents as well to get the reaction from the parents and we are tracking their academic performance as well as how they're adjusting to school this year. In the middle school academy, um, we've had reported fewer transition issues and unexpected behavior reports on the part of students. Middle school band camp, um, please understand that um, this group of students without the middle school band experience would have walked into middle school never having played an instrument or participated in a band for some of these students. So it allowed for successful band programming and um, the enthusiasm there, I think, will spill over into this next summer as well, even though our students in fifth grade have had an opportunity to participate in band. It allows our students to develop those important relationships before transitioning to another building. And our high school academy, we offered thirteen different courses. Uh, twenty-one half credits were earned in this, during this summer academy. Um, and that is, any, all of these were free this year. Um, typically our students, if they're looking for a credit recovery, need to go off to find another summer school somewhere else. And typically there's a fee associated with that. For those students who were unable to finish the credits that they had started to recover, both the study center and our guidance office helped to support students over the course of the school year so that they could finish out that coursework on Ingenuity to regain those credits. So that's twenty-one, roughly twenty-one students. There may have been some who earned multiple credits, who would not have to um, sit through another semester, full semester of coursework. They were able to adjust and only have to address the pieces that they weren't successful in, in order to earn that credit. So let me show you a little bit of a visual impact here of our summer learning academy. As you'll notice, we leveraged um, the resource, our wonderful resource at Wentworth Elementary School. We had students in groups working with staff. We, we had students inside and outside. Um, we leveraged and used all of the outdoor spaces that were available to us. We had students working individually. We had students working in groups. As a matter of fact, we had themes each week and the egg drop was quite a hit, as you can see um, from this visual and you've got a few quotes from some of our students. Students were also involved in a variety of different projects. As well as Reader's Theater. Popsicles were a big hit in the, during the summer as well. Our students really benefited from interacting with each other and it took a little bit of time, but by the second or third day, our students were um, very excited to see their friends again and to learn how to um, be safe but still interact uh, and play together. We also got feedback from our parents as well. These were the marshmallow ovens that our students built. And parents um, sent us uh, feedback even after every week's newsletter, but also through the um, end of the academy surveys. So about next year, planning is going to start. Uh, soon after each academy ended, I met and did a debrief, ran a debrief meeting and took lots of notes about what went well for staff, what went well for students, what might be improved for next year. In general, um, students across all experiences, all of the summer um, experiences were successful. Um, the feedback from students was quite positive. Uh, transportation, I really want to give a shout out to Sarah Redman. We had very few bus drivers over the course of the summer. They are not required to work. Uh, and in some miraculous way, they made it work to get our students where they needed to be, when they needed to be there. Um, a great shout out to Sarah Redman and her team. A special thanks to those who stepped up to lead and coordinate. I could not stand here or sit here in front of the screen here and be able to share um, all the good things that took place for our students without these people stepping up to help lead and coordinate. That would be Brittany Oya with the support of the K five principals, Jennifer Wood, teacher at the high school with Jake Brown and Sue Ketch backing her up. Melissa Jones and Missy Shabo, um, Work Wonders at the middle school. Um, with the support of Kathy Terrell and Chris Rhodey, um, uh, the one man show in coordinating the um, extended school year program. Megan Altieri, Jamie Devlin, and Danielle Anderson helped to coordinate the kinder camps at each of the three K two schools. And I would like to um, recognize um, there are a number of behind the scenes supports that make all of this happen. Uh, we typically think that when the students are gone and the teachers are gone, the buildings get closed up and then they get opened up again in the fall. That's not the case. Without any summer program. Without any summer programming in place, our schools in the summer are very busy places. That's the time when maintenance can get in there and take care of HVAC systems, equipment can be installed, it can be cleaned, IT goes in there to install equipment, floors are scrubbed, carpets are cleaned, windows are washed, food services does the same sort of thing, and central office support as well are busy getting ready for the next year. So without summer programming, they're busy places. Added on to that were six programs this summer impacting five different schools. So I really would like to thank both transportation facilities, the custodians, the maintenance who made room for us, food services who helped supply snacks and beverages for our students, IT who made sure that the staff, particularly extended school year, had the software and the devices they needed for both themselves and their students, and then the central office support staff. And quite frankly, our schools are closed, there's no one in the front office. So central office serves to receive phone calls from parents and transportation and helps coordinate, making sure that the students get to where they're supposed to be, when they're supposed to be, and then again back home. So I'd like to thank quite a team that came together to make this happen over the summer again. Other than the extended school year program, none of these are required, but folks stepped up, we leveraged our federal funding in order to make it happen for our students in Scarborough. So thank you for your time tonight. I know you have a busy agenda, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, should you have them.
All right, thank you so much, Monique. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Monique?
I do.
Yeah?
Well, first of all, my kids have taken part in some of these programs and they've been wonderful. The band this summer was really great, so thank you so much for that. Also, so how do kids get involved in in like the, some of those programs? How do parents find out about these?
Yes, the, we generally, it is by invitation only because we focus, we don't have the capacity to offer all sorts of summer programs, community services is in that business, we are not. We provide programs that we feel would benefit students within our resources that we have. So generally, we talk with staff and students who are receiving additional supports in school are generally invited first. If we have room available, we would then send out a notice to others and to parents. So it really is by invitation only.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gillian. Are there any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, Monique. I'm just going to echo Gillian, that it looks like a wonderful program all around and a huge coordination of effort. So thank you as well to you and to your team that coordinated this. Really, the pictures are wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, let me. All right. So Agenda Item 7.0 is a motion to go into an executive session pursuant to 1 MRS 40560 for the purpose of discussing the January 6, 2022 meet and consult with the SEA to return to public session. So do I have a motion?
Don't move. Second.
Good, perfect. All right, I think we're ready.
Mrs. Skipdis?
Yes.
Ms. Casalotis?
Yes.
Mr. Kellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Leong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Pennyhough?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
And Miss, yes.
Here.
So as a reminder, we're going to, for those of you watching and attending the meeting, we will step off of this meeting, we will go to a separate meeting and have a quick executive session, and then we will return back to this, this meeting to finish out the business meeting. So we will be back in a few minutes.
Oh. Can people hear me?
Seconds to spare.
Do we, do we have everyone?
Not yet.
Okay.
All right. I think we are all here. All right. So Agenda item 8.0 is the superintendent's report. So Jeff, I'll turn that over to you.
Okay, great. And we'll be, we'll be sharing some slides and also Diane will be helping me with our update as well. And I just wanted to start out by saying, I know there, there's clearly been some misinterpretation or an expectation that, that there's this updated COVID response plan that nobody's seen before that I'll be presenting tonight. That's not the case. There's, there have been some significant changes to the main DOE and CDC updated standard operating protocol, the SOP, that we were, we will certainly be going through. And that's the main part of my, my superintendent's update for this evening is to go through the implementation of that updated standard operating protocol. And so there's, there's nothing, nothing new beyond that. And would just remind certainly the board and the public that, you know, our reopening plan that was approved back in August did note that, that, you know, as the pandemic has progressed, main CDC and, and operating protocols on responding to positive cases and to COVID has, has fluctuated and gone through different iterations and revisions. And we've had to adapt and adjust to those revisions accordingly. And so that's, that's really what, what this is about. And in the new business, the motion to approve superintendent's updated COVID response plan is really about the updated changes to the, to the main CDC SOP and standard, standard operating protocol. So if, if staff were confused about that by our communication this week, then I certainly take responsibility for that. Really, the, the main bullets for the updating, the updated standard operating protocol, there's some updated protocols for how we identify positive cases and conduct contact tracing in schools. There are new quarantine expectations and exceptions that are consistent with the updated federal CDC guidance. And then there's also a new definition for what's considered schools that are in an outbreak status and then how, how, how the CDC and then how local officials would respond if schools were in an outbreak. So we're going to go through kind of those three main areas as part of my update this evening. So first, the new SOP language as it relates to positive individuals isolating. So individuals who test positive should isolate for five days from the onset of symptoms or if they're asymptomatic. What, sorry. Or if they're asymptomatic from the day to their positive test. If you have no symptoms or symptoms have resolved after five days, you can leave your house and return to school. You must continue to wear a mask around others in the community for at least five additional days. If you have persistent or worsening symptoms after five days, be sure to stay home until there are no symptoms and until 24 hours after your fever resolves without the use of medications. Then the new language regarding close contacts. Because we are a district that has a universal masking mandate, regardless of vaccination status, students and staff can continue to participate in school and school activities when they are close contacts. We are still establishing and identifying close contacts. They must wear a mask around others for at least 10 days in the community. Main CDC encourages testing five days after exposure if they do not participate in weekly pool testing at school. So again, because of our universal masking mandate, something that certainly main CDC and the federal CDC is continuing to encourage and recommend for all schools. Kid, because of that, even if students are identified as close contacts or exposed, they can continue to attend school and maintain in-person learning. Unless a close contact is fully vaccinated or has a COVID or has had COVID in the last 90 days, they must quarantine in the community per main CDC quarantine guidelines, although they continue to come to school and attend school-based activities. If the symptoms develop, get tested, stay home from school and call a healthcare provider for questions or concerns about any symptoms. And again, that part of the updated SOP has an updates to this table regarding quarantine exceptions. So depending on where was the exposure and then what exceptions do quarantine, to quarantine, do they qualify for? So for, for any student or staff member who are fully vaccinated, there's no need to quarantine. As a close contact, wear a mask around others by 10 days. The additional quarantine exceptions, five and six. So individuals who are participating in the school pool testing program or the test to stay program or in schools where there's an enforced mandatory masking policy, close contacts do not need to, or quarantine in the community but can continue to report and come to school daily. And then obviously, the, the seventh part of the quarantine exception from main SOP is if none of these are in place, if the, if the district does not have a mandatory masking policy, then close contacts would need to quarantine and the student is not vaccinated. So none of those six exceptions apply, then they would need to quarantine for five days and then wear a mask around others for 10. The, the new SOP has come up with a much different definition of when a school is considered to be an outbreak status. So previously, if a school had three cases within a 14-day period, they were determined to be an outbreak status. And then, and then it would take a very long time to get out of status. And essentially, what, what ended up happening is virtually every school is identified as in outbreak status. The new definition is around school attendance. So instead of opening an investigation when the school has three or more positive PCR cases, as was previous, previously in place, the investigation would open when at least 15% of student and staff are absent due to illness. When a school reports 15% absenteeism, main CDC will follow up with the school to obtain additional information and determine if the absenteeism report meets outbreak status. This approach is more consistent with main CDC's approach to other communicable diseases, including the flu. When a school reports 15% absenteeism, main CDC will follow up with the school to determine if the absenteeism report meets outbreak status. The main CDC will inquire about the number of COVID-19 positive students and staff, the number by test type PCR antigen, number of students of staff who are in quarantine and not in school, and the number of students and staff working or attending remotely. The second part of the new business or the second vote that's part of new business related to COVID protocols is about accepting at-home tests. And that, as determined in, in the updated SOP, is a local decision. So with increasing availability of at-home tests for COVID-19, schools may choose to accept the results from such tests. Main CDC recommends that schools that choose to accept home-based test results do so when the school is able to verify the collection date and, and patient, having this information will help determine the start and end date of isolation and quarantine if, if dedicated. And talking with Dr. Fanberg and, and other medical professionals, the decision to accept at-home tests, we feel makes a lot of sense. And given the difficulty of obtaining tests or certainly having our, our local medical professionals being able to facilitate the testing is, is super challenging right now. So being able to accept at-home tests, we feel is, is a good decision to make locally. And then some data. So we put this chart together to identify where we are exactly this week and coming off of break. So we have columns by each school and totaling the total number of positive pools that are reported this week, total number of tools that are tested each week. So how many total numbers of pools are in each test? How many people are participating in pool testing by school? Total number of students and staff at each site and then total number of cases that were reported this week. Diane, I don't know if you wanted to kind of talk about this slide a little bit about where we are currently with, with our COVID cases.
Sure. Yeah, I can speak to that. Certainly, as you can see from that last column, the total number of cases that have been reported this week, that is definitely a, a huge uptick in comparison to what our previous reports have been. And, and you see those reported on 14-day averages in our weekly district newsletters. Huge shout out to our nurses this week. Our, our nurses have been rock stars through this entire pandemic as all of you probably already know. And, and this week, I think, has been a true test of resilience for everyone on our medical team as well as the folks in the buildings who support them by assisting with the contact tracing. Certainly, many of these cases were cases that they found out about upon returning to school on Monday and Tuesday. And so the good news is for those cases, there was no contact tracing because we haven't been in school for quite a period of time because of break. That being said, there have been a number of additional cases wherein we had students that might have come on Monday or Tuesday and then tested positive. You can also see in looking at the first column that we have had a number of That we have had a number of positive pools this week. You'll see that three of our schools say to date, and that's because. We literally are still having information come in from our partner Concentric. Who provides all of the pool testing results for the state of Maine. I think that, you know, with the number of districts that are participating in pool testing at this time. And probably compounded by the active number of positive pools that all the districts in Maine are seeing. Because of the reflection of community transmission at this time. Our results have been a little bit slower coming than they generally are. Half of our schools test on Monday and half of our schools test on Tuesdays. And so today's Thursday and we are still waiting. For some final results for our pools for Wentworth and Middle School and. The smaller number of pools that we have for district-level employees. We really wanted to make sure that you had this information so that you can see where we're at. Although it, you know, seems alarming to see that we have 26 positive pools. That also says to us that. Committing to the work of pool testing is important for us because we are. Finding out about more positive cases as a result of doing that. And, you know, the sooner that we can identify those positive individuals and get them. In isolation and not exposing themselves to others, the safer we can keep our our school communities. Also wanted to give you a statistic in regards to the number of people that we have participating in pool testing. And how that compares to our total numbers of individuals in our district. If you look at the total number of students and staff at each site. Those numbers do reflect all of the staff and all of the students at each of our schools. And we did it that way because, as you're probably aware, our staff can also participate in pool testing. And so, you know, when you look, for example, at Blue Point, 199 people participating in pool testing. Out of a total of 247 people. So, you know, obviously. You know, many of those people are also adults. And and our staff members who, you know, made the decision. By themselves, just as many of our families have, that that weekly information is a good confidence marker. To know that each of us continues to be as safe as we can.
Yeah, I would also just remind the public that they're, you know, they're still in Cumberland County as well, just. Districts that aren't doing pool testing at all. This this weekly testing does give us a really proactive sense of of where we are. And as you as you're looking, I mean. The the elementary school has a much, you know, higher percentage of the total number of students and staff. In part because that's where we started implementation and then also, you know, up until recently. Our K to six students weren't eligible for vaccination. So pool testing was an additional mitigation measure for for our kids initially that were not yet eligible to be vaccinated. And the the last slide that's part of this. Is just outlining expectations. Underscoring the importance of of the universal masking requirement. So there have been both at at the district level and brought forth with Maine DOE and CDC. A lot of discussion around what the metrics are around the the. The requirement of of universal masking. So. And there have been lots of people asking, well, what would it take, you know, where to where we no longer have to require everyone to be in masks? Staff and students. So the two big numbers that have popped out, at least in the discussions that that we've been a part of. Among superintendents and staff and district level. Really looking at the metrics, including assessing, obviously, the local and county transmission rates. As well as staff and student vaccination rates. As far as a minimum of 75 to 80% of students and staff vaccinated or even 85%. I've heard the different numbers based on on where you are. And then along with having moderate to low COVID-19 transmission rates. Both must be present in order to consider removing a universal masking requirement. As far as any kind of consensus around the exact numbers of those metrics, they don't currently exist. So there's no one that's really come out and said. All right, if you've got 80% of your community vaccinated and the commit and your community transmission rates are X. Then then that means that you can decide to make masks optional. So. There there are plenty of districts, I think, that are trying to create. Those metrics and, you know, locally, but there's nothing collectively as a county that that yet has has really been presented. Given the changes in this SOP document. And then as well as the high transmission rates across right now across Cumberland County, the entire state. And 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 in Scarborough. You know, maintaining the universal masking requirement for all students and staff. We feel serves to keep our community learning in our classrooms in the safest and most healthy way possible. So really, again, you know, what's what's been. Termred as the superintendent's updated COVID response plan as part of this agenda is is really about continuing to follow. And implement the changes in this and in the current and the now current updated. Maine DOE and CDC standard operating procedure SOP that we've been following. You know, since the pandemic began. Diane, I don't know if there's anything that you would like to add to the slides or our description of. Of where we are.
The only thing that I would add at this time is that we do have Dr. Fanberg, who is our district physician with us this evening. So he's been listening. Jeff and I have had the opportunity. To talk with him outside of this meeting and to kind him of fill him in in terms of. You know, where we were at with our presentation for this evening and then also, obviously. To get his feedback and guidance about, you know, the status of COVID-19. Currently as well. So, you know, certainly, we'd love to hear from you, Dr. Fanberg.
Great, thank you. So I'm John Fanberg. I am a pediatrician. I'm also an adolescent medicine subspecialist at Maine Medical Center, and I've worked with Scarborough Schools for a number of years at this point. As with the school having an uptick with infection, the whole community has. And when I spoke to you back in September. I've reported that we had 100 positive cases over a two-month period. For the same like the time at the moment, we have 600 positive cases in my clinic population I have access to. And so so there is an uptick completely across our community. Maine Medical Center as of Monday had eight kids in the hospital with COVID who were school age, three were in ICU. And the Maine CDC reports that there's been two deaths under the age of 20 related to COVID since the beginning of the pandemic. So Omicron is highly infectious, very rapid in progression and dangerous for some. The nice thing is that we're in a much better place now than we were six months ago in some other ways. And that is that we have vaccines and the vaccines are available for all school-age kids at this point, and it's effective. It's not perfect. It reduces your chance of disease, doesn't remove it. It reduces your chance of hospitalization. It doesn't remove it, but it virtually eliminates your risk of ICU stays and deaths if you're vaccinated. And so if your child or you are not vaccinated, I urge you to get vaccinated immediately. You're sitting ducks in this environment if you're not vaccinated. And we now have testing that we understand better, as well as we have antibody treatments, which shows some promise, yet they're both in limited supply and limited access. And we know that masks make a huge difference, especially when one's indoors and with airflow is lower. And we also know at the same time that school is important for the academic success, for the social development and for the mental health. So the CDC has come out with constantly updated recommendations. And I don't think we've seen the end of them. We're going to continue to get more, fortunately, unfortunately. But I think it is important that we follow CDC guidance the best we can to maintain consistency. The big kicker will be, can we also apply it completely as it's written, such as apply masks like they recommend? Those are my comments, I guess.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fanberg.
Yes, thank you very much, Dr. Fanberg. I know this is on our agenda later to vote on, but. While we have Dr. Fanberg here, I think now maybe we can go ahead and have some of that conversation. I know there's questions. That that some of us might have. Perhaps to make it easier, we'll just have you raise your little hand as well. And then I'll just go in order. So Leanne, go ahead.
Hi, Dr. Fanberg. Quick question for you. In the slides, they were talking. Jeff showed a grid that had students 16 and 17. What happens with those students who are over 17 years old, which could be pretty much our senior class? What are their quarantine requirements?
Can you pull that grid back up? I don't remember it being age-based. So there was one grid that he showed related to quarantine times after this one. Yeah. And I said the 16, 17 is one of the criteria. I can't. Define that piece because I was unaware of that one piece of it. The the way I interpret this grid is what's in the green zone and what's everything below it. And that's my simple approach as far as who needs to be quarantined for longer. And so the important pieces, are you vaccinated in part or all in my mind? And are we participating with the pool testing? And are we enforcing the mask mandate is the critical pieces for interpreting.
Okay. The other question I had had to do with the 15% for. The CDC looking at us for outbreak status. Is that based on the reason for the illness or are we putting everything together? Meaning if you had. 12% of the students who are out with a cold and the flu. And only 3% with a coronavirus, one of the variants. Are we being investigated for that or does it have to be based on what the illness is?
It's a great question, which I'd probably be better off referring to to the biostatisticians on this topic. Having said that, I know what's we're testing for in our environment, at least in the offices and in the community, and we're testing for influenza left and right. We're not seeing much. We're testing for pertussis. We're not seeing much. We're testing for strep. We're seeing a tiny bit of it. And we're testing for mono. Okay. And so that not every kid gets every one of these tests. But almost everything we see is either COVID or some other virus that we don't have a test for. And so so yes, that will include those things there, but there's a lot of other virus out there that's getting into school.
Thank you.
You know, I would just I would just add. Leanne, that the 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 benchmark, that 15% benchmark just means that. If that's hit your attendance, then CDC is going to open an investigation. So they're going to look into why those kids. Are absent and try and determine to what extent is it is it related to COVID? And then help you try and determine how you should respond. It's not an automatic like 15%, you're shut down or anything like that, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Thank you. That's really what I was looking for on the clarification side.
All right, we'll go Jenna and then Alicia.
What are the current vaccination rates for our our school-age kids? Do you know, Jeff or Diane?
Go ahead, Diane.
I was just going to say, so that isn't information that we have readily available. Our nurses, we can tell you how many kids participated in vaccination clinics, for example. But we have not collected vaccination information from our parents because that is not one of the required vaccinations. From the state of Maine, our nurses can, when they need to, look within the impact system to see if. Students are vaccinated, but they're really not in a position to share that information widely because it is protected medical information. So. But I think that you can look at the DHHS website. To get estimates of, you know, how many students in different communities are vaccinated. And I know I haven't had a chance to take a look at it this week. But in looking at it a few months ago comparatively to other districts. We do have a really high number of. Of people according to that measure. And then also, just as evidenced by, you know, we had, I believe it was 666 students vaccinated. At our K to five clinics, you know, in November and December. So I think those those are pieces that are. Indicating to us that we do have a high percentage of folks that are vaccinated.
Yeah, I mean, I quickly glossed over this morning and I think for. For Scarborough specifically, I think that I saw the number 96%, but again, I don't know if what that. Entails because I didn't look as deeply, but just given that number alone, it sounds like our community has a pretty high vaccination rate. And surely surpasses the 75 to 80. Metric for universal masking.
Yeah, and Jenna, I don't I don't think that's a hard number, or at least that's my understanding. I think it's a projection based on. I don't know exactly how they base it, but I don't I don't think that's a hard number, but it but it is definitely heartening to see that the high vaccination vaccination rates. You know, given the eligibility requirements now and that all our school-age kids are eligible to be vaccinated.
With the pool testing that we have. Do we know how many of those were just asymptomatic and. Versus actual actually showing some mild symptoms?
So, you know, again, I I I think that we would have to go back and and retrieve information in terms of what we do know. I would assume that because those students were in school, that their symptoms would be mild or. You know, or perhaps no symptoms because otherwise. Those students should be staying at home per our daily self-assessment.
I think that's all I have for now, but I might something that might pop up later.
Sure. So if you want to just put your hand back up, if you think that's something that would be, that's perfect. All right. So we'll go Alicia and then Gabby.
Okay, thank you. I think somebody asked a question about. Kids returning after COVID diagnosis and then being on days six through 10. In the lunchroom or in areas where there would be a masking break and. I'm just wondering if if there's a plan for that and. It 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 seems worrisome to me, no matter which way you handle it, because. I mean, the kid, I think the kids figure out who's had COVID, no matter what, but because of their absenteeism and but. If they're sort of segregated from the other kids in the lunchroom or something like that, I worry about what that means. For them. And so have you thought about sort of the social implications and? Also, what is the plan for for the non-masking time?
We're definitely thinking about that, Alicia, and 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 as part of your question, I think you're. You're wrestling with some of the issues, you know, the efficacy of separating out students like that or the impact on that and 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 also. The recognition that part of that adjustment to the to the five days is that, you know, when kids are are truly. Passing on the virus, right? Or when, you know, and it's and it's that early early stages right before onset of symptoms and then. You know, they're not able to then pass the virus on to others. So so we're, you know, we've talked about that. You know, specifically on what six through 10 looks like and if we do need to do any additional. You know, mitigation strategies for for students that are identified as positive and then returned to schools, but. You know, making sure the universal mask mandate stays in place, which is certainly the intent of these SOP changes is is priority number one. And then making sure if there's any additional things that we can do to to keep kids safe and to mitigate any transmission, then we're going to do that.
I think one of the things we need to recognize is this is risk mitigation, not removal. It's just somebody still might. just somebody still might be infectious after day five. We just are playing statistical game as far as drawing a line on day five. And that's the purpose behind it, the importance of this mask between that five and ten day period. I honestly don't know why we have mask breaks anymore. I understood the concept when we're learning how to wear masks, but indoor mask breaks make me wonder.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, the, the second question I had was about the chart, the, the quarantine chart, I guess. So when, when and the at-home testing as well. So, Dr. Fanberg, when I'm thinking about the, the at-home testing, really, the, if I understand it correctly, as a mandatory masking district, the only real inquiry for the at-home testing is to determine when somebody's baseline is in terms of their ability to return back to school. Is that right? Because we're not quarantining close contacts, you don't have to prove that you're negative.
So the at-home test is a basic, just understanding of it is much more accurate if you're symptomatic than if you're not symptomatic. But so make an initial diagnosis with the at-home test has more accuracy when one does have symptoms. And so that's the first and primary use. We're shifting our, our speech instead of getting PCR testing to do the at-home rapid testing as an adequate substitute for the PCR solely because we don't have enough access to PCR testing in the area at the moment. If you ask for a PCR testing in my office, it's going to be two days before you can get it at the moment. And so we're shifting diagnostically more towards at-home testing because of the ease of access. Not that it's a better test overall, but it's an adequate test. As far as getting testing prior to return to school, that's something that the school needs to sort out still. The CC guidance has not given that fully, but that would add an added layer of mitigation behind that.
So, so you're saying that you don't have to prove, you don't have to prove that you're no longer testing positive in, in order to return to school. You just have to prove that you've tested positive on a certain date and that it's five days past. Is that right?
That's correct, according to the current CDC guidance, and that might be shifting. It's not to say that one might, it says, this is a concept of what's good for your community and honesty and being supportive and being protective for others, not just yourself. And so I'm hoping that people do their best to care about their communities and themselves as well. But that means being smart about it. If you have symptoms, being honest about those symptoms and not going back to school or making the diagnosis early along those lines, if you have symptoms. And on the far end, if you have residual symptoms, not saying you don't have symptoms and going home because the symptoms are, you know, that's still lingering and recognizing not everybody's going to fit that five-day mold as much as we wish it did, but statistically, it's, it's a measure that will get most kids as far as who will be less infectious. It means that if one really wants to be safe about things, they would test themselves voluntarily at home before coming back, even if it's not a mandate, because that would give you more confidence that you're not going to give it to somebody else. The worst thing I'd want to hear is I gave it to somebody else and they got really sick and ended up in a hospital because I gave it to them. But this is, there has, we need to work as a community when this comes down to this. Can recognize what's smart behind it.
Of course, I just, for, for my inquiry about whether we should be accepting the CDC guidelines for at-home testing, I just want to make sure I understand the purpose of the use of at-home testing. I think I understand that better with your answer. Thank you.
All right, Gabby.
Sorry. Um, so I just want to let you guys know, like, at the high school, at least, there's been a lot of talk of like, why haven't we shut down? Are we going to shut down? Like, are we going to go remote? And I feel like with this plan, like, I understand why now, but I feel like a lot of the students won't understand because they don't watch these meetings and stuff. So I'm wondering if there's going to be a way this is communicated to the students and to the parents, like the fifteen percent of absentees, and that's like when we get investigated.
Well, Gabby, I guess I would switch that to you a little bit. What's a good way to do that? I mean, it's all obviously spelled out in the new updated SOP, you know, and we've, we've shared that communication, obviously, with all staff and parents, you know, and then certainly something that, that, that we can again reinforce after this evening's meeting with, with all of our students as well. What do you think of that?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, a pretty good way of getting out information over the intercom. So maybe, I don't know how that works, but we can figure that out.
Okay. We're taking suggestions, I guess, is what I'm asking you. If there's, if there's another way that we could do it that's more effective, that will, you know, get our point across in an effect, as effective way as possible to our student body as well.
Yeah, I think the announcements over the intercom, at least at the high school level, is a great way.
Okay.
A great idea.
Just another suggestion on that, Jeff, and I know that this is Dr. Fanberg's time, so I'll be super quick. There's also newsletters that Sue sends out to the families, and I think there should be one coming up relatively soon because of midterms. And maybe that's a good time to add that in as well.
Yeah. And there's also, I do know that, you know, they're, they're working out a potential, you know, plan for midterms in case of, you know, high absenteeism, that kind of thing too. So that, that, that all makes sense to all put together in one.
I want to ask more questions about that, but I want to, I'm going to be like Leanne, I want to honor Dr. Fanberg's time. Dr. Fanberg, you alluded to potential changes coming down the pike from the CDC. Do you know, do you have any word on what those might be?
I wish I knew when. And we're going to get changed. We've learned resilience through this pandemic. We have that change every month, every two months. So that's the reality piece. And, and the question is, as we get more knowledge about the statistics and the viruses and the variants, that's what's going to drive change. Sorry, I pressed my phone too hard.
All right. Do we have, does anybody have any other questions for Dr. Fanberg? Why he's here? All right. Thank you so much for joining us, Dr. Fanberg. We really appreciate your perspective and your experience. So thank you so much. Have a great night. All right. Agenda item nine point O is the chair's report. I don't have a lot to, to say. There we go. Just a very brief report. First, I would like to welcome everybody back to, from, including our students and our staff from the winter break. I know that this week, as we've just seen from the numbers, has been a very trying week, and especially for our teachers and our health staff, and as we learned, our transportation staff as well, there's been a lot of work that's gone into this week. So I would like to publicly thank all of our nurses and all of our health staff, and then as well our bus transportation staff, Sarah, for all of the hard work. I know this has not been easy, and the numbers really speak for themselves. And I can't imagine the amount of work that's gone into identifying and tracing all of the, the positive cases. So thank you, thank you very much. Other than that, if you were, we did have a workshop prior to this meeting, and we have almost finished our goals for the year. So we have, it looks like one more quick meeting ahead of us to wrap those up, and I will report on the finalized goals at a later, at a later date. All right. Any questions for me? All right. Agenda item ten point O, our committee reports. So we will get started there. The first is the finance committee, so I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Thanks, Shannon. I really don't have much to report at this time. Our first meeting with Jeff, Diane, Kristen, Kate Bolton, and myself was on December eighth, and it was established that all future meetings will be held every second Thursday of the month. So our next one is next week, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two at four thirty.
Any questions for Jenna? All right. Thank you so much. Our second policy committee, Leanne.
It's not a question for Jenna, but I was also at the, at the finance meeting as well. So just want to make sure you had me in attendance for that.
I did. Sorry.
Policy, I did say it's our next meeting, but it's actually our first meeting. It will be this Tuesday, January eleventh, five to six thirty. The agenda will be posted tomorrow. Looking forward to getting that back on, and we will make sure that we get a standing meeting set up for this as well.
Thanks, Leanne. Does anybody have questions? All right. Our next committee is negotiations, so I'll flip it to Alicia.
Okay, thank you. So, um, if you've seen any negotiations updates previously, Nick has, most recently has explained that much of the negotiations process is confidential statutorily, but we can share some information. There are a number of contracts that we've been working on currently and in, in the most recent history. So the educational support professionals contract, usually around the school systems, everybody knows them as edtechs, our, our friends and helpers in, in the school system. Their contract expired on July first of twenty twenty-one. The school board approved the tentative agreement on October for twenty-first of twenty twenty-one. And so we're just waiting now for the union to have a vote to decide if they are going to vote to approve that contract as well. Then we have ongoing negotiations occurring with the custodians and food service specialists. And we're currently in the middle of impact bargaining, but the, any, whether there are any, and potential impacts of COVID to the working conditions of the, the staff. So that's been ongoing as well. And we do need to start the process coming right up of, of working on our teacher contract. So that will be upcoming as well.
Thank you, Alicia. Are there any questions for, for Alicia? All right. Next is curriculum, no, excuse me, communications committee. This would be Jillian.
Yeah, hi. We just had our last meeting yesterday by Zoom. We have another meeting coming up on the second location to be, to be determined. We'll have our meetings every month on the first Wednesday of the month at four thirty. But basically, just look out for articles and district newsletters and information on social, social media.
Thank you. Any questions, Jillian? All right. Thanks so much. Next, I believe, is John, the curriculum committee.
Yes, we're going to have our first meeting next Wednesday at three thirty. We're just going to introduce some new members and discuss committee goals. See where we go from there. I guess we'll figure out when we'll have our standing meetings at that time as well.
Very good. So a lot of us getting our, our committees off the ground right now, for sure. All right. Any questions for John? All right. And then, at the end, these are, again, our liaison roles. I, does anybody have a liaison report for us right now? No, we haven't all, there hasn't been meetings. So just wanted to verify that we didn't have anybody, give anybody an opportunity. All right. So that, our next agenda item is eleven point O. It's our student representative reports. I'll turn this over to Gabby.
Okay, so I'm going to be presenting for Yulia as well. So Wentworth's new greenhouse that they've built was large and warm enough for year-round learning, I think they were doing in there. I'm not exactly sure. And then they also participated in the Scholastics Annual Pajama Program, collecting sixteen boxes, which was a hundred and seventy-two sets of PJs. And then this video on the right is the Alves update. It's a summary of all the impressive and important works kids are engaged in. And it's actually written by all the Wentworth students. We can watch it if you'd like. We don't, it's a five-minute video. I mean, we don't have to watch the whole thing if you guys, it's up to you guys.
I don't think the sound is there.
Oh, sorry. Is the sound? Uh, sorry about that. Is the sound to this video working? I can't, because she has to mute herself. No? Okay. Um, we can just move on to the next slide. This is, yeah, we can move on to the next slide. So this is a link to the middle school's first edition of their Good Morning News. I'm not sure if the sound on this one will work either, but we can try this as well. Sorry about this. Is this sound? Is this sound working? Huh?
It doesn't appear to me.
Okay, let's go to the next one. Yeah, we can just move on to the next slide. I have one more slide.
All right, it doesn't want to advance.
Oh, I think it's back. I think you're on, it like was a new link.
Yeah, I think the slide. Up here.
Up to the left, like you're in a different tab, I think.
My mouse moving? Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so at the high school, the week before break, we had a spirit week, and it was really fun. There was Dress Like Seasons Day, and we actually did do the Dress Like Administrators Day, as Jeff had mentioned earlier. And there was Christmas sweater. There was Anything But A Backpack Day. That was so interesting. You could see right there, someone brought a motorized car for backpack. There was wheelbarrows, garbage cans. Someone brought a lawnmower. Kids got really creative. It was really funny. It was such a fun day. And then there was also that Scarborough High School band and chorus presented their winter concert on December seventeenth. And they had live viewers and a livestream, and some of their songs were Silent Night, A Celebration of Hanukkah, and We Wish You A Merry Christmas. And those are some pictures of the concert. If you want to go to the next slide. And then Student Council at Scarborough hosts an annual volleyball tournament where kids can form teams and compete against each other. And the middle team is the winning team. They're called the Dream Team. And it was over during advisory, and it was fun to watch and competitive, and it was a fun time.
Hey, Gabby, going back to the dress as an administrator thing, didn't Mr., didn't Mr. Tario dress as a student?
Yes.
Sneak into a classroom?
No one knew it was him. He, like, he just looked like a student. It was really funny. And it was funny to see everyone, like, their ties and dresses. It was a fun day.
All right. Any questions for Gabby? All right. Any questions for Gabby? Thanks so much. That looked like such a fun week at the high school.
It was.
Yeah, that's very cool. All right. Agenda item 12.0 is new business. 12.1 is the Wentworth School donation.
Right, so I have a letter here from Principal Kelly Crosby. Dear Scarborough Board of Education, a Wentworth family who was asked to remain anonymous has provided consistent support for families in need at Wentworth School over the last few years. Recently, this family reached out to provide a substantial donation to support students and families experiencing financial hardship due to the pandemic. This anonymous donor has provided a donation of $1,000 to Wentworth School. This donation will be used to support immediate needs of students and families such as clothing, outerwear, footwear, personal hygiene items, vouchers, and more. We respectfully request that the school board approve acceptance of this very generous donation on behalf of Wentworth School with many thanks.
All right, that's a lovely donation. So thank you very much for that. Do I have a motion to approve the Wentworth School donation as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, I think we're ready for the vote, Diane.
This is Giftis. Miss Catalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Peeny Huff?
Yes.
This is Turner?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Agenda item 12.2 is the motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for at-home COVID testing. So first, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Do we have any discussion? All right, looks like we're ready for the vote.
Mrs. Giftis?
Hi, yes.
Ms. Catalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Peeny Huff?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Agenda item 12.3 is a motion to approve the superintendent's updated COVID response plan. So first, do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, any discussion?
Are you able to pull up those slides again for the SOP? Yeah. Thanks, Kelly.
I'm gonna, I'll start with Alicia first and then Leanne second.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to say that it was good to hear the input of community members. And I was glad and proud to see how respectful everybody was in expressing their opinions, both today and in writing. I know that it's been a hot topic across our nation. And so to see Scarborough rise above that was, was a great, great sign. And, and you know, everybody has really important feelings and positions about this because it relates to our kids, and that's a great subject to be impassioned about. And there, there's, you know, there are good points for everything. For me personally, I don't think that it's my place to be making any sort of medical decisions for the, the school system. And I would turn to the experts in making those decisions as I have, when I've been called upon to make decisions. And so to continue to follow the CDC recommendations makes sense to me. I'm happy that the CDC recommendations do allow our kids to remain in school more under these guidelines and in what they have determined to be a safe way. And so for that reason, I'm going to endorse it tonight.
Thank you, Alicia. Leanne?
Thank you. I do have a question about whose SOP rules? Meaning, if we have students who are going to pass, and if Portland does not adopt the five days, is it our SOP that rules for the students who are attending? Or would it be Portland Public Schools that rules? And the same would hold for sporting events, both for the middle school and the high school. If we are out of alignment with any of our competition, how is that going to work? And do we just simply follow what our district is doing?
That's, that's a really good question, Leanne, around athletics when there's two teams that are competing. And we actually had that for a little time with, there were some districts that were not requiring participants during a match to wear face coverings, like during a basketball game, for example. And that didn't last very long. The, the decisions, the decision was that the team would adopt, if, if another team or another town had more stringent, or had that mask requirement for participants, then the, the team that didn't would abide by the more stringent requirements. And that's, that's essentially how, how that was navigated athletically. And we're still waiting as superintendents and everyone else more specific guidelines to, to come out within the next week about like the return to play expectations and those kind of things for athletes. So that guidance has not yet come. We're fervently asking for it, aggressively asking for it. So I do know that it's coming soon, but there may be different standards. And as Dr. Fanberg was, in terms of like when you're okay to return to competition if you've tested positive for COVID in the five days versus 10 days, that kind of thing. So that guidance is, is coming. And, you know, our athletic director, you know, Mr. Legage is, is all over and in discussions around what those expectations are gonna be. So we should get more guidance on that within the week.
Fantastic. And I do want to echo what Alicia said. Thank you for pulling all of this stuff together. Obviously, a lot of thought and preparation went into making sure that we had what we needed. And, you know, we're not the experts. So thank you for helping us get to a good place.
And I really wanted to appreciate Dr. Fanberg's time, obviously on very short notice, both to be here this evening and then also to talk through these things with Diane and myself and others even prior to this meeting. It was really valuable and necessary.
All right, Jenna.
So with the, the current SOP, I think, you know, do I, do I like the recommendation? No, but I, I like it better than what we currently have in place. So for, for that, I would endorse it. However, you know, just to kind of parrot what you guys had said about how we're not, you know, the experts and, you know, we don't want to be the ones making the medical decisions for, for our, our kids, our children in our schools. I, because of that, I think we should really start looking into lifting our COVID policies that we adopted in, in August and kind of work on a, a new plan, especially when we have such a high vaccination rate right now. My, you know, I appreciate Dr. Fanberg's perspective from a medical point of view. And I understand that, like, medicine is only one piece of the puzzle that ought to be considered in decision-making of our COVID policy. So, you know, one of the things that I, I deal with, most knowledgeable on is education, child development, mental health, and behavioral science. And anxiety, kind of like Anxiety 101 here, it's contagious. And we're human, we're social beings, and this is a survival instinct. And, you know, for example, if you're walking in a mall and suddenly you see a stampede of people running the opposite direction of you, your anxiety ramps up and, and you match your behavior to how the others act instead of waiting around to see what might harm you. And, and I feel like this is where we're at with the Omicron variant kind of being super contagious, but also not as deadly as we might have thought it would be. And despite all the science and information shortening quarantine time and at-home tests and apes and thematic and, and such. And so, you know, we're seeing time and time again just anecdotes and viral videos of challenging behaviors. And, and it leads to additional student and teacher burnout. And, you know, thoughts and feelings, behaviors, all, they're all connected. So what I, what I want to really stress is we're perpetuating anxiety by imposing the policies that we currently have in our schools. One thing that I do know is, this is reported by the CDC also, that there's a surge in, like, suicidal attempts for, for youth, especially amongst girls. And with all the policies in place, you know, there's, there's fear of missing out on school, missing peer interactions. And I think we are at a point, and I'm, I'm hoping that this is the endemic here, but I, I feel like we are reaching to the point where we need to really revisit our current COVID policies and, and have another workshop and work out, tease out all these little things because medicine is not the only issue that we're dealing with here. Their, their overall social development is, is need for concern currently.
Thank you, Jenna. Leanne, I see your hand up. Are you, is your hand still up or do you have another question? Okay. Okay. I do want to ask Jeff, I do want to ask you a question. I have, and I, earlier you mentioned that the high school is considering or looking at plans, midterm plans. And I just wondered if there's anything to that you can speak of because I have heard some concern in the community about kids who are afraid to miss school because of, you know, they, they feel this is the prep time for midterms and they don't want to miss their midterm. And how is the, what happens if they do miss the midterm? And with, I know our numbers being what they are and as high as they are right now, do, is there anything that you could give us on that or is that still in the works?
Yeah, I mean, I, I had just, I had received an email with potential plans just for accommodating for the fact that there may be, you know, the absentee rates and midterms coming up. So being able to flexibly schedule makeups, that kind of thing. We want to make sure that students are, are not coming to school sick. You know, or feeling like somehow that's an expectation, right? I mean, I mean, you gotta take care of yourself, and if you're sick, you're sick. So we're just making sure that we're flexibly, that we're responding to, you know, the, the needs that are on the ground in terms of student health and safety and putting that first. And then just making sure we have a plan in place to account for the fact that we could have, you know, a lot of kids that may, may, may miss their midterm and may need to make them up. So there's logistical concerns to that, obviously, but then there's also sending the message of, you know, don't come to school if you're sick. And take, take all the precautions, obviously, that, that we're talking about this evening in, in terms of following CDC SOP and then also following those recommendations from our, our medical community.
Gotcha. Okay, so whatever the plan is, I'm assuming whatever contingency plans that, that comes up with the midterms, I assume will be communicated
Right.
going forward. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. And then my second question is, or maybe more of a comment. We heard Dr. Fanberg allude to the fact that this CDC guidance is potentially changing in two weeks. And we know this to be a very fluid scenario, right? So we're certainly, as it changes and we discuss it moving forward, I just am hoping we can, we've, we understand, we know that we're following the CDC guidance as it comes, and that's what we've committed to moving forward. Just, I'm hoping we can avoid any confusion going forward where teachers feel that we're not, you know, the comments we had at the onset of the meeting, where that we're not communicating a change. And this is the first they've heard it, just that we all understand that the CDC guidance is fluid and it changes and updates as new information is made available. All right. Do we have any other discussion? All right. I think we're ready for the vote.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Miss Catalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Peeny Huff?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Agenda item 12.4 is a motion to approve the high school STEM lab project. Do I have a motion to award the stem cell lab and classroom renovation project at Scarborough High School to Benchmark Incorporated for the price of $279,630 and to authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract for construction of the project and to take all other actions on behalf of the Scarborough Public Schools reasonably required to effectuate the contract for the construction of the project in accordance with the vote?
Second.
Any discussion? I think we're ready for the vote.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Ms. Catalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Peeny Huff?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
All right. Agenda item 12.5 are the meeting minutes of December 16th to 2001. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, I think we're ready for a vote.
Mrs. Giftis? Miss Catalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Peeny Huff?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner? And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Agenda item 12.6 is appointments. 12.6.1 is the high school student services department head.
Oh, sorry. This is, yeah, this voting on Wendy Spalding as, as our high school student services department head, lead teacher of student services.
Do I have a motion to approve the appointment to the high school student, of the high school student services department head?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay, I think we're ready for a vote.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Miss Catalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Ms. Leon?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Peeny Huff?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner? Did you say yes? And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Sorry.
Agenda item 13.0 is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
I can't.
Any discussion? Kristen? I think we're ready to vote.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Ms. Katalonis.
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher.
Yes.
Ms. Leon.
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom.
Yes.
Mr. Peany Huff.
Yes.
Mrs. Turner. And Ms. Giftis.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I hope you have a great night, Kristen. I hope you feel better soon. Get your voice back. Bye bye.